All right, well, I am showing six o'clock. So thank everybody for joining us today. I will go ahead and call this meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll go ahead and move on to roll call. I did get a note that Brent was not able to make it. We'll just check if he attended the live meeting.
Don't see him right now.
Okay. So we have no for Brent, Guy.
Here.
Ken.
Here.
Nate.
Here.
And Jeff is here. All right, four members present, we'll call quorum. We did get sign in for the public comments section, both people that just wish to be acknowledged here, as well as people that would like to speak. For those that have liked to speak, I'll just kind of remind of it's a three-minute cap for each individual speaker. I do apologize, but I'll just keep my stopwatch here just to keep us all on track. But as I speak your name, if you guys don't mind either standing where you are, coming up to the front and talking to us. And we look forward to hearing your feedback. And so I will start with Connie Ballwick.
Thank you. Less than a week ago, a petition was posted to dissolve a section of the Human Growth and Development Curriculum for the Fall River School. And as of 3:00 PM today, there are 269 signatures that agree this section should be dissolved. I wonder what the number of signatures would be by next week. As stated on this petition, the introduction of the Human Growth and Development Curriculum has a section that is deeply concerning as it presents topics on gender orientation and identities that are sensitive and inappropriate for school environment. At the heart of the matter is the belief that discussions on gender and sexual orientation should be entrusted to families who can address these sensitive topics in a manner aligned with their values and beliefs. Schools should focus on educational development rather than delving into topics of a personal and complex nature that should be navigated within the confines of the family home. Our goal is clear. Prioritize the educational focus of our schools and preserve the right of parents to guide sensitive discussions about gender and identity with their children. We urge the Fall River School Board and educational authorities to reconsider and dissolve this curriculum to better serve our community's needs. The petition was signed by members of our community to protect all of our students and respect parental rights. It is crucial that our educational content aligns with the values of our community and keeps parents at the forefront of their children's upbringing. Thanks to this petition, it led to many discussions with other concerned parents and community members, to which all agreed that transparency from the school, the school board, and administration is lacking. It leaves a lot of us asking, why do we have to continually reach out or ask for more information? What else is being said taught or shown to students that parents are unaware of? I'd also like to mention in the last meeting that I was sitting here with, seventh graders should also be able to opt out of the entire class. They had it in sixth grade. They don't need it again. And the fact of the matter is, we never got an option to opt out of the entire class. We were told straight to our face we could only opt out of a certain section, and that was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Guy. All right, we will move on to Cody Ennis.
Thank you, John and Cody.
Thank you. My name is Cody Ennis, the father of two young ladies, one of which graduated in 2024 and the other that is headed into fifth grade. Of all my responsibilities in life, protecting my children is at the top of the list. Over the last few years, I've become concerned about inappropriate conversations and relationships between students and staff. One such instance occurred in spring of 2024, the guidance counselor and tasked fifth graders with listing private characteristics, including gender identity, religion, sexual orientation, and socioeconomic status. These topics are deeply personal and had no business being inventoried by guidance counselor or anyone for that matter. I raised the issue with administration. The counselor passed it off as an exercise about showing how people are different. Another more recent example occurred a few months ago when a music teacher suggested to students that J.D. Vance was responsible for the Pope's death. How outlandish political conspiracy became a topic of discussion in music class, I'll never know. Parents were assured it won't happen again. However, I questioned why it happened in the first place. These are examples of how boundaries of appropriate discussion have become only suggestions to some. Discussion of gender identity at school is the most recent example of these blurry boundaries. Two of the most basic absolute truths is that there are two genders and that women have babies. Those facts are not disputable. It is not the responsibility nor the place of staff to introduce theories that suggest otherwise. While I plan to opt my daughter out of anything involving the school nurse, I have concerns about all students. For the children whose parents are less aware or may not be as concerned about what their children are being taught. Students who are confused about growing up and why things are happening, when they attend a class to understand the facts of life, they are introduced to the wide array of gender identity theories. The same curriculum only further confuses students when the identity of a woman is viewed as a social construct rather than a biological fact. On June 9th, only nine days ago, a petition to dissolve the gender identity and orientation portion of the health and student, or I'm sorry, health and human development curriculum was introduced. As of this afternoon, we have 269 signatures. 269 signatures from people who believe what is real and what is true. 269 signatures from people who wish to protect our children. 269 signatures from people who will fight until this curriculum is dissolved.
Thank you, Cody. All right, we will move on to Kelly.
Thank you. Okay, sorry. So I just wanted to quick speak to the board. I had what I felt like was a supreme privilege of being on that Human Growth and Development Committee. We had some really tough conversations, right? Like there are definitely opinions on both sides of what is and is not appropriate. There were a lot of discussions, but I was really proud of the group. We all agreed to show up, to have honest conversations, to bring our full opinions, and to act with integrity. In the reading of this petition, I am deeply saddened to see that one of the members of those committees had mischaracterized what's in the curriculum, the discussions that entailed, and then created this petition when they had participated in this committee to help advise the board as we had seen fit at the time. We did reach a consensus on all the different parts per the standards of the state, and I felt really good about our work. So I just wanted to share with the board that I thought the committee did a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to Tom Polish.
I've been teaching here now for 29 years, but I just want the board to keep our school a safe and well and a place for all students. Leaving gender orientation, gender identity, and sexual orientation in the Human Growth and Development Curriculum is vital in creating that safe place for students. 26% of LGBT youth are forced to leave home because of conflicts with families surrounding sexual orientation and/or gender identity. They need to know that if home's not safe, school is. We should welcome all students and let them know it is safe to be here. By removing the language I've mentioned, or worse yet, dissolving the curriculum entirely would be detrimental to all students. That action would make it look like the LGBTQ+ community does not exist, and they do exist. An environment where everyone is accepted is what a school should be. All students should feel welcome and safe here at Fall River. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. All right, we will move on to Joe Rangers.
Rangers.
Rangers, sorry. Thanks for coming in, Joe.
Hey, thanks for having me. Nice to see you all, board. I am a father of three boys in the school here. My eldest was going to speak, but he's not feeling well today. But he wanted to share with me that previously, when he had taken the health curriculum, he does not recall any real good discussion about gender orientations and identities discussion. They really didn't explore that at all. But, well, let's be honest, these kids are having conversations outside of the classroom and outside the home. And those conversations are going to be overheard by teachers, and it would just be best if we had fact and science to kind of dispel some of the rumors and the ideals that are sometimes leading to bullying. We talk a lot about mental health in our schools now with the kids these days. And I think that having them have a safe space to have these discussions and talk about what gender identity is and orientation and all those things out in the world so that they are prepared for the world. The world doesn't exist in a binary system. There isn't just two genders. And they need to be prepared for that when they go out in the world because they're not going to stay in this tiny town their whole life. I question the validity of 269 signatures, no offense. Who are they? Where did they come from? It could be anybody that signed. It doesn't necessarily mean that they're residents or that they are of the county or the state. And that's fine, to each their own. You can sign whatever you want on the petition. Just wanted to put that out there that they're not guaranteed to have an investment in our community. And I also just wanted to reflect on what Kelly said, that it sounds like there was community involvement. There was conversations. There's lots of committees. You guys are committees of committees of committees. So it's been talked about. It's been discussed. It sounds like there's been a good exploration of this. I think approving it would be the best option. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. All right, we will move on to Matt Dietzenbach.
Thank you very much. My name is Matt Dietzenbach. I had two students that come through the Fall River School District from kindergarten all the way through their senior year. So I was part of that committee, the Human Growth and Development. And I agree with some of the members that were also there that we did come to consensus with people that if they did not feel like there was parts of the Human Growth Development that parents did not like, that they should be able to have that opt-out option. So that is available for any parents. But the one thing I've come here to is that on your website, it says district vision, mission, values, and goals. And under that, it says, "In pursuit of our mission, the Fall River School District will provide a safe learning environment." That means for all students. "It delivers a comprehensive educational program." That means we give them all the facts they're built, address the needs of every student, teach good citizenship and respect for self and others, partner with families and students and other members of the community, which we did during that Human Growth and Development Committee. And the final thing it says about making decisions for the school board, "We believe that decisions should be made in the best interest of all students and their families in the Fall River School District." And when you exclude somebody, that doesn't mean all. You're taking the word "all" out of your mission statement that you guys posted on the website. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. All right, we'll move on to Rachel Park, because I don't want to miss the last one again.
Thank you. So as a child mental health professional, I wanted to come and speak to the board today to speak to what I see as the necessity of including awareness of gender diversity for children and adolescents. I've had the pleasure of working with children for many years in my role as a therapist, a psychotherapist of children and adolescents. And I have seen firsthand the negative impact of non-inclusive language and disaffirming environments on these kids over time. When schools' Human Growth and Development curriculum fails to include gender diversity in particular, it reinforces rigid norms that marginalize students who don't identify within strict categories. The exclusion creates an environment where students who are gender diverse feel invalidated, they feel stigmatized, they feel rejected, and this leads to psychological impacts that are very negative and severe, including inadequacy, shame, confusion, high anxiety, high levels of depression, suicidality. We see those time and time again. The second, the flip side of that that I want to speak to is I'm also a mother, and an inclusive curriculum plays a critical role for all students. When gender diversity is not acknowledged, it limits students' ability to learn about empathy, respect for others, respect for diversity, and the importance of acceptship. For gender diverse students, a lack of support hinders their ability to navigate their school's environment, an ability to feel safe where they are. An absence of an open curriculum and discussion about diversity deprives students, all students, of the opportunity to develop positive attitudes towards inclusivity of all ages, stages, ranges, races, genders, orientations. Although I don't believe it to be the place of our schools to shape up belief systems of our children, I do believe there's a responsibility to all of our students to provide an inclusive educational experience that both recognizes the validity of our students' internal worlds and prepares them to integrate into a larger world where particularly gender is no longer considered in binary terms. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and I think the last of our sign up sheet is Carissa Trandberg's.
No, I just signed it, but I don't want to speak.
Okay. Does anybody else think that they signed up to speak? Call it.
My name is Janessa Turner, and I was a Fall River Pirate from 2013 to 2016. I graduated with a 3.4 GPA, and I won awards in classes such as World Geography, Spanish, and Independent Living. I mention these things to show that I was an average student with average grades, but I was far from normal in this community. I was one of three openly gay students in the entire K-12 student body, and I was never allowed a day to forget this. I was heavily bullied by my peers during my entire high school career. The guidance counselor was sought out many times, but being bullied by the majority of your peers is not something you concur. If the parents of that time had taught their children about respecting people's differences, my story might have been different. But this is clearly not being taught in the homes of our children. So it should be taught in our schools where children spend the majority of their time. According to an article published in the School Journal of Health, a study was performed by several doctors over 5,000 students in four school districts to show that students that showed nonconforming gender identities and sexualities experienced more violence in the school districts. In the end, they were able to prove this theory, and they recommended that schools include gender diversity education to prevent violence. Furthermore, another study published by Gillian Weinberger and Jennifer Magory-Cover states that since children spend the majority of their time in schools, they should implement inclusive curriculums. In conclusion, people like me are going to exist, whether you agree with it or not. They should be allowed the grace of coming to a school where they can feel safe and welcomed and not live in fear because parents refuse to teach basic respect in the household. I hope that the LGBTQIA kids of Fall River know that they are not alone, and we will continue to stand with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Janessa. All right, thank you all for speaking and for those who signed up as well to just show your presence here today. With that, we will move on to the stated agenda, which starts with a student council update.
We do not have a student council update at this time. The school, they out, they've done all their things they needed to to get ready for homecoming, and they're taking a right this fall.
Awesome.
So the same happens with celebrating Fall River. We have a student who's coming, but they couldn't make it tonight, so they're going to come July 8th instead.
All right, then moving on to the minutes. So in our package, we got the minutes from the May 21st. Sorry, anybody that's welcome to kind of leave as you wish or stay through the entirety. We had the minutes from the May 21st school board meeting. Having reviewed, does anyone have any questions? Otherwise, I will take a motion to approve.
I'll put a motion forward, Jeff, to approve the May minutes.
We have a motion by Ken. Do I have a second? Seconded by Nate. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Do you hear a treasures report?
So we've got the normal documents here. It tells the same picture as all last one. It looks fairly on target. I'm trying to dig deeper at this time to see if I can guess where exactly we're going to end up. And we're coming to the year end here, just a couple of weeks anyway. So the last time I looked at this, probably in March, I thought it looked like we're going to go okay this year and probably some sort of surplus to add upon balance, hopefully. But I'm trying to dig deeper into that now with the more complete data. There's still a lot of things that happen here at the end with Colleen and Andrea and I mostly for financials. But just to let you know that we're coming. The July meeting, we will not have the audit to report, but by then I can give you my best guess at it. The audit is late July or early August, so there's still time to go on that. But by next month, I plan to have some information for you. I also put on your station there a worksheet that was suggested by a board member. Because I talked about, but this maybe gets more detail. You have your permission to take with you instead of just listening to me. And this is the first document I want to use as part of the treasure report because all our finances are back around how many kids we have. And they live here, they overroll in and out. So the line I drew, that's where I came. Because that's, to me, the demarcation I've come up with. So people's seats, you can see the history through 2019. It peaks at the very beginning of that time period. Then since then, the number of people who actually sit in our classrooms up through the fall of 2024. You're 43 kids sitting here this fall. Pair 43 to the previous two years, I mean, 2020 was a high. The 43 still is really pretty good going back for about 10 years. That's really a fairly consistent number. We've had little ups and downs, but this fall, we have as many kids we had eight years ago. So we haven't really gone down that many people in the school. And the projections are just our best guess based on current trends, the number of kids seniors graduating. We've had a couple of this size 4K and K classes lately, which is helping to mitigate such a large senior class leaving. Then the FTE count, that's the kids who actually live in the district. Doesn't say where they live, where they go to school, but they live in our district. You see those numbers have gone down over time. But then when you factor in the open enrollment differential below that, as we've had less kids leaving the district and more kids coming to our district, it'd be kind of made up for the FTE count going down because every one of those open enrollment kids, we get $91, $100 for a regular kid and $14,090 for a special ed kid. So our FTE count's going down, but our people count's staying the same. It's really not that significant difference. The revenue that I got there, this past year's $1,652 per kid. So it is more on the revenue than if they live here. But open enrollment, the combined regular, special ed, it ends up being about the same amount of money. So that's what saved us, especially if you look at the overall, the money differential from 2019 to this year, that's $500,000. And that's why we're getting a referendum before we did because we turned the numbers of people coming here. The fund balance then also wrote that down there. You see where it was at the end of the 2018 school year, the end of the 2019 school year. My first year here, we were able to put a bunch back into fund balance and bring it back up. 2021 was almost dead even. I've never had a school in 15 years come up that exact, or close. And then it was a decent decision of all those special kids and staffing, and knowing we probably had to go to a referendum to keep from having deficits. The numbers were a little worse the next two years in anticipation of needing to go to a referendum. The bottom part of this, I'll use as part of the referendum discussion, but it'd be nice if you had those numbers so you can speak from truth, speak from numbers. And if people have questions about it, you have the data. So thanks for the suggestion. It's easier than me just talking about it. Have it to take with you.
Okay.
Save your laptop for the referendum.
All right, any questions for Dennis on the treasures report?
That's what it is.
Hearing none, I will take a motion to accept the treasures report.
I'll make a motion to accept the treasures report.
We have a motion by Guy. Do I have a second?
I'll second it, Jeff.
Seconded by Ken. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Motion carries. Are you have a hard stop? I'm sure Jennifer can.
What's that?
I'm sure Jennifer can present your case if you really have a hard stop. It probably is going to be 15, 20 minutes by the time we get here.
Yeah, I wonder where I'm at, so.
You can jump off and do it now, to be honest.
Can we do that in new business?
You can change your order. You just make a motion and approve it, change the order.
Yeah, could someone make a motion to bring up the track team trip? He's got a team waiting for him.
I'll put a motion forward to start the track team discussion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All right.
Well, I'm here to request permission to take the high school track team to the National Championships in Mason, Michigan going July 10th through the 13th.
Is this the first time we've ever done this?
Yes.
Okay.
This is probably, this will be our fifth trip out there.
And how does it get funded?
All through our sponsors and donors.
Okay.
Nothing to explain.
And you feel comfortable with transportation and chaperone?
Yeah, it'll all be parents. Parents, this event, the parents try all their kids out there.
Okay.
Do we have any shooters?
Do we have any shooters?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm taking a team of five. This is the second time that we're taking a whole team. So it's tough because we've got three who are qualified individuals. We do add. So the league is 55,000 kids around the U.S., 45 states. The kids that get in, there's only 1,800 that get in to shoot in that group. And we got three of them going. We've got Quentin Serbinone, Drew Trotter, and Hunter Hertzberg, each with Columbus. And then we had two other kids that qualified as part of the team. It took, the team building had quite the same, you know, tough standard, but it's still pretty good. So we're going to take Taylor Grebel and Matthew Salzman.
That's awesome. That's awesome.
Yeah.
I know a lot of people talk about this, very proud part of Florida, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Mark? I will take a motion to approve the track team national strip.
I'll make a motion to approve the national strip for the track team.
With motion by Guy, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Nate, all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Good practice.
Thank you, guys. Good luck.
Thank you, good luck.
All right. We will move back and to agenda item eight. So in our package, we had the detail for both payroll and vouchers. So having reviewed in advance, I will go ahead and make a motion to approve payroll for six thirty through seven fifteen and vouchers four two seven, seven seven three through four two seven, eight seven two, two zero two four, zero zero five six eight through two zero two four, zero zero six three eight and two zero two five, zero zero four eight through two zero two five, zero 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 six four in the amount of four hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and six dollars, fifty-seven cents. Do I get a second?
For a second to that, Jeff?
My motion by Jeff, seconded by Ken, all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. All right. We will move on to gifts and donations.
All right. Andrea's had her college, your daughter's college orientation today, so she's not around. So I'll go through the donations. First one, the art program, got some money from Savannah Hills. They do their annual straight account and they donate the money to the art college. So it's very generous of them. Track team donation, donations, you just heard about track team, J S V Insurance and Benefits LLC have helped contribute to that so they can do these projects and go on to the nationals. And then our PPO donated much of the money for the mulch. You see the new playground out here and mulch that Ryan's going to get spread around so that kids have a better playground and for them for that donation also.
There's a lot of mulch, by the way.
Yeah.
All right. Um, all right, we will move on then to a referendum report.
All right. On the table sheet then, continue with the capital letter. We expected the bids to be back by now. We asked for an extra week to get fine tuned to get the best bids they have so we're hoping. Next Tuesday, we can have those bids. Once we get that information, we'll probably decide within the house and then we're going to ask those grounds committee to come with us to go over what it looks like. Because if it looks good, then we'll have to turn that to the school board for those grounds committee to get a good look at it first. And it might be better to have that on a separate night instead of we have a little bit of time for the board meeting. So they get a better time to look at it and digest it. And if there are things we think, you know, we've got to send this back. We've got to do something different that gives us time if we meet earlier than just right for the next board meeting. It'd be nice to get that fine tuned so maybe July and the latest August, we have approved plan so they can get going on that. The next part of the cap, the reference of the pool project for three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. You can see the pool's been drained, we're getting ready to start that. It's expected to be done this summer and they're getting started. The hundred twenty thousand dollars is designated for the door entry system. It's being priced out right now, but our best guess right now is that it's going to come under that. We think partly because Fund Eighty is the community rec and there's a lot of doors that are rec doors and up the complex where people use for rec gains and summer leads and stuff. So we think we can have that help us out there quite a bit. Then latest protection for interest earnings on the money that we invested for the proceeds of the borrowing is at least three hundred fifty thousand, but that's kind of conservative, we expect more than that. We really feel that that amount of money is going to help us take care of whatever mold renovation we have or have to do. And also if not take care of all of the new chiller that has to be gotten as part of this process. Maybe cover the whole thing, if not all of it. But again, we don't know all those answers until we get the bids back from Pindore. So we are waiting on that. The second sheet I gave you is for the operating referendum. And the first column left is how much we anticipated we needed to just cover the deficit for the year. So the eight hundred fifty is not all designated for projects. But the first column is what the expected deficit is going to be that year. So we had to take out that and subtract that in eight fifty. And that gives us expected available column in the second column. We hope for a cushion for, just because things go. And I'm looking at this year, but yeah, something's more expensive than expected. And things just happen that way. So we kind of want to have that cushion in our budget so we're less likely going to get a negative. And we're also hoping to add money to fund balance by July. Much better idea for this year, but we put that in there for the following years also. And then all the projects that we expected, I put them in the red, they are done already. So this first year, the HVAC project is done. The chiller is a kind of clinker in that part of it, but the HVAC system is updated. We've got a new van, you can see the nice playground system out there. So we did some stuff on stage, some lighting and sound. And we're buying some cabinets, they haven't purchased yet. But if you spend that much on cabinets, you can see how we are up within two hundred and four dollars of what we expected this year. Then for the following years, this next fiscal year, starts on July first. The parking lot, they started on Monday and then it rained and rained and rained, so they stopped. So hopefully they get back up there some. The visitors locker room is kind of connected to the pool project, we get that new serviced and Ryan's going to do some interior work for what would be his new office. That's part of the visitors locker room. And then the bus bar, which you approved last time, you can see how, at this point, we have some stuff for furniture, stage, bathrooms, yet to be determined. We haven't figured out exactly what those going to be. So these are the numbers and whatever you're thinking of having the next things done. We're just waiting to see how all are. And I was finished out with a budget this year and the budget for this coming year. These are all available. The buildings, grounds committee has seen this, the clients have seen this, but it's kind of actually a real copy. And the most updated copy of what's been done so far. So if you look at the first year, there's a lot's happened already. HVAC's hard to see, but.
Yeah.
But it's still a big, big thing for the, for the building. That's why.
Referendum report was fine, you have anything else you need to add to that?
Unless there was any questions.
Any questions on the referendum report? I do appreciate the new visibility and I like carrying this one forward.
That's a good idea. You've seen it, it wasn't getting haunted. You have to see what's happened since and the other parts about people count and deficits is just good to know.
Okay. All right. Well, hearing no questions, I will hear a motion to accept the referendum report.
I'll put a motion forward to accept the referendum report.
The motion by Ken, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Nate, all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. All right. And the education committee met before this meeting. And I'm actually going to keep my update fairly brief because all three of the agenda topics are actually action items in new business, and so we'll cover them. And so there was some, one piece on a course description update. Another piece on net new course proposal, both from the middle school and the high school level. And then there was a discussion on human growth and development, which the group will present their recommendation as part of new business. So not to kind of belabor anything, any questions of the education committee? Otherwise, we'll just cover them in line of new business. All right. I think I still need a motion to accept the education committee report.
I'll put a motion forward, Jeff, to accept your description of the education committee report.
The motion by Ken, do I have a second?
Second it.
Seconded by Nate, all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. All right. We will hear a spring activities report. I believe I saw Abby?
Yep.
Um, so spring activities report. Track went really well this year. Unfortunately, we had to cancel one of our invitationals, which is a big one due to weather. But next year, we're rescheduling everything, hoping to get those teams back again. Let's see, softball was our first year of our co-op with Ryo. I think with everything that happened this year, we has a lot of positives. We just posted the head coach position for that on weekend through Ryo School District. So that's open. As soon as we hire for that, we will move on to hiring assistant coaches for that as well. Baseball had a fantastic season. We were hoping it could have gone longer, but with, with only having of our C team, I think Dan really did a great job with those kids. So I'm really proud of how that went this season. And then, you know, our middle school sports did really well also. So it was a good, it was a good spring season. So that's all I really have on that.
Yeah, and I appreciate the write-up. I know we all read in advance, so.
Yeah.
And especially all the award winners. I love seeing all the, all the conference and just kind of all the accolades.
Yes.
Any questions about spring activities? All right. I will take a motion to accept the spring. I don't think I need a motion for that, though. But I think you're still up, right?
Yes.
So we will then move on to the coaches and advisor pay.
So for this one, we're just doing the coaches' pay. Advisor's pay has moved to July. And you guys should all have appendix B, an updated one. So the coaches' pay really hasn't been looked at too closely or even updated within the last eight-ish years. So we were really behind the ball with competitive pay for our coaches. And knowing who our coaches are, they've had longevity. It kind of stems to kind of work through what we haven't been working through in the last eight years. Bringing all of our coaches up to par for what they've been doing for our student athletes. And just making it pretty transparent about what the pay rate will be moving forward. So on that appendix, I added in all of the base rates on the second sheet. And then added in head coaches for longevity will get an extra hundred dollars each returning year. JV, JV two assistant coaches will get an extra fifty dollars for each returning year. And then middle school coaches will get an extra twenty-five dollars for each returning year. So if we do have, you know, some turnover and we hire a new coach, they would start at the base rate for whichever position that they're applying for. And then longevity, we would add on the extra, the extra money.
Is that a, an item that would start today and everybody's in year one or?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that would start as of July first.
And if we considered a cap, I mean, we have the blessing of very tenured coaches, but that could get expensive. So have we considered putting a cap on an extra per year until X?
Um, we have, I mean, that's up for discussion. This was just something that we kind of came up with that makes it pretty equal and evenly based on. So if that's something that we need to discuss, I'm, I'm all for it.
I don't think it's a, it's not a progressive hundred dollars. Hundred first year, twenty second year, is that what you're getting at, Jeff?
Well, it's a hundred every year.
Yeah.
So by the time you have one year's coaching.
The second year, they want to have pre-hundred division.
No, no.
Correct.
By the time you've forty years coaching, you're making an extra four thousand dollars.
Yeah, I got it. Danny, you're probably going to push four hundred dollars.
So if you go for four years, you go for four hundred.
No, I said forty.
Forty?
Yeah, we have forty. The R L years. Yeah.
And this is all very competitive to our neighboring schools, school districts with the same enrollment, everything like that, too, so.
If the board wants to say ten years halves.
Yeah. We can add that in there.
You can put a half in there.
Mm-hmm.
That's kind of where my head was. I mean, I just, I don't want it to run away. Like I want to, I don't know. I just don't want all of a sudden it gets really expensive. Because we have a great coach that's been here for a while. I think ten years is a reasonable number. I mean, because we're starting right now, it doesn't really matter and it won't matter for ten years. Right? Because we're starting everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if you've been coaching for thirty years, we're not adding two thousand now.
Ten years will probably change us anyways.
That's it. So it's not, it's not a deal breaker for me. It's just something like I would, you know, for future boards, we might want to consider, but.
Yeah. And we can definitely talk about that. Also, so the ones that are highlighted and red on your guys' is Ryo. So they took over the softball program, so we will split that across with them. We split costs with cross-country. And then our football program, we also split across with them as well. We are taking over the wrestling program, so we are the lead school now. So that will come under us for pay, but that is also split between four schools. So just FYI about those two.
Abby, do you have a total number of how much this increased based on our current coaching?
Yes. So with everything listed on the current sheet that you have, it'll be an additional forty-five, or fourteen thousand five hundred. And I know that seems like a lot, but again, we haven't done this in eight years. So had we been keeping up with it or someone been keeping up with it, it wouldn't, it would pretty much equal out to what this should be right now.
Okay, that must be, there must be thirty coaches on there?
We have a lot of coaches. Yeah.
Yeah. Abby, from my perspective, it, it seems reasonable. Any questions?
Thirty-seven. Thirty-six.
Do we have the cap right now? Do you want the cap right now?
You want a motion with a ten-year fix, Phil?
That would be my vote, but I, again, it's, I mean, it's not something that I'll die on.
I'm, I'm not even convinced we need the hundred dollars, to be honest with you. Where they just got, like head football coaches got a thousand dollars. Is that what the other schools are doing, Abby?
Yes, this is all very similar.
They're progressing a hundred year, or a hundred year?
Um, no, we wanted to, we wanted to give the coaches that were here, that were progressively and staying here is what we want is longevity, to continue to keep them here instead of continuing to look for other positions.
It's also less likely in three, four years, you're going to revisit this. You don't have to renew this scale every few years because they're automatically going to be raised. Some of the schools we look at is tied to base teacher salary. So if the base teacher salary goes up, they get more every year. So many have a way of increasing. So this is just our way of increasing and making it fair to each, each one.
Right. Because a lot of our, a lot of our coaches aren't teachers too. So that just might be fair for them to have some sort of increase per year.
Yeah. I'm okay with this as written.
I'll take a motion to.
Are we going to make a motion to obtain the cap or not?
No, I don't think so.
No. Also, motion for it as written.
I mean, if, I mean, please know what he's saying.
I'll make a motion to approve it as written.
All right. So we have a motion by Guy to approve, or to approve administration's recommendation for coaches' pay. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second by Nate, all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right. We will move on to student manuals.
All right, I'll just start it. Um, my handbook looks essentially the same as what you approved last year except for one item. I've added the curriculum review request process that is part of our administrative guidelines and then also the policy that goes along with it. So the parents see that and just understand that process as a whole way change.
All right. Um, then move on to middle school, high school?
Yeah. Um, so mine is not just, you know, purely one thing, but I can also add in, I'll draw your attention to some of the bigger additions, similar to the lines on page six. I added what our administrative guidelines are for our curriculum inspection. It is a part of our board policy, but by having it added into our handbook, we are just making it a little bit more available for parents who do decide that they want to come in to review that. Um, page eight is just updating our qualifications for open campus privileges. We've made it through our second full year of our revision of open campus. And so we've, with I M S L, we've worked to tighten up our expectations of our students to be able to be working at grade level and to be getting all of those behaviors in in order to earn that ability to not be in school during their study halls ordering in. And it just got me a few questions about anything about other people and everything. Um, page nine, under student planners, we are no longer going to be purchasing planners for our high school students. They just were not using them. But we are going to continue to purchase them and use them for our middle school students. It's just by the time they get to high school, they have their own systems, they have their own pathways, they like to do that. So I did update that. And then in study hall, we no longer have the mash or monitored academic study hall. We just have open campus or we have regular study halls. So I eliminated that piece of it. And then the next update, that's not just like a clerical thing, is on page fifteen. Um, with page fifteen, what we did on this section is we kept the graduation requirements similar to what our board policy says. We had it specifically outlined here with having English and math classes laid out in this section, which did not mimic our board policy. And then I'll show you on a different page where we put more of those specific things in and then I'll get to that rationale. Um, page sixteen, we added specific details for early graduation. We have a student this upcoming year who is planning, and you'll see that in our interior approval, who would like to graduate at the end of her junior year. So we wanted to make sure that we got that added into our handbook so that students could see, okay, if I do want to graduate early, these are the guidelines that I have to follow. And so this is the seventh semester early graduation. Well, it's, it says like what they can do and what they can be a part of. And then the sixth semester, the seventh semester is everything that we've been following since I've been here. And before, we just added the sixth semester early graduation in there. So that piece, I don't know if there's any questions with that specific section. It just gets into that, can you apply for scholarships? What does that look like? What classes can you do and that kind of stuff? Um, on page seventeen, we added under the grading systems procedures, number four, which talks about grades transferred from other schools. Basically that they have to, they're, we're going to get that as close as we can to our grading system. One of the things that we're finding is with our DCA class and our Star College now, they use pluses and minuses and we don't. And so we wanted to make sure that we were, again, just putting it straight out there for, if you take one of those classes, we are going to get it to match our grading system as close as we can. Page eighteen talks about scholarships. We specifically outlined the, pulled a lot of this from the scholarship packet for what students will need to do in order to qualify for scholarships. And then we also met with, I can't remember what it's called, John, do you remember? The Higher Education AIDS Board and updated our criteria for our status of technical excellence scholarship to best match the criteria that we were using, that we wanted to use for our recipients of that, of that scholarship. So if you kind of look through the standards to qualify and then the point system is the last thing on page nineteen that's highlighted, what those point systems are going to be for our students who do receive that scholarship. So that we are putting precedence on, or not precedence, but a weight on students who are not only taking our C T E courses, but are in O Y A, are on track to graduate. in OYA, are on track to graduate, just so that it's representative of our students, because it's a, it's a pretty big scholarship.
Sorry, for the scholarships, is this just scholarships facilitated by the school?
So for, yes. So we don't have, we don't have control of any of the other scholarships outside the ones that we offer.
Okay.
And then page 23 is where we then put our Fall River course requirements. Because our graduation requirements, as stated by the board, are much more vague, but then we really narrow it down here to say, what do our students, for Fall River students, need, what courses do they need to take here at Fall River in order to graduate? So we have specifically in there the English and the math. However, we do have some students who are coming in now from other schools who are taking algebra there in eighth grade. Well, we can, if they were, we don't want them to have to retake their algebra class if they've already taken it and have shown that they're proficient. So we did put that in there of what our expectations are, because the other thing that we don't want is we don't want someone to take an algebra class at another school and then not be ready and not find success in our geometry and our advanced math classes. So what we put in here was just a spot for parents to be able to see, this is what we're looking for if you want to bypass what our Fall River High School requirements are. Questions at all about that part of it?
Perfect.
Then if we flip over to page 24, we are now a part of the Wisconsin Guarantee and Direct Admit Wisconsin Program. Those two programs do is it offers admission into UW systems based upon the criteria for the two, for the different programs. So that the traditional application is what students normally go through, or have been in the past going through. This year, we did participate in direct admit, which allows students to be able to go straight into a UW system using our transcripts and our criteria. And then Wisconsin Guarantee allows that students who are in the top 5% of their class are automatically guaranteed to be able to go to UW Madison. So we did join that, and we wanted to make sure that we had that out there for the students and parents to be able to see that that's an option. For page 25, we have our dual enrollment options. Again, we're just going in there and explaining that if a student does sign up for a dual enrollment, that they, they're going to finish, that they understand the load and what it's going to take to do it, and we expect that we're going to pay for those courses, that they are going to go ahead and finish them out and do their best to pass them. From there, the next big thing is really page 32, and that we're going to get to here in a minute. That just highlights the additional or new classes, some of them which already are board approved, but then some, a few of them that I'm going to be asking of your approval from tonight. So page 32 just has the highlighted new courses that we are looking to offer for our high school students this upcoming year. And that is all I have for major highlights unless anybody else has questions.
You've gone so well, I didn't want to cut you off.
No, we're fine.
I want to go back to 18 and just say that I'm not in love with the tie of one student, or more than one student conduct violation at scholarships, kind of just continuing to add punitive nature to our athletes, so you're better off not being an athlete.
So that's already in the Code of Conduct book, it just wasn't in our student handbook. So it's a practice that we'd already been following, it just was in one place, but not in the other. So, and I think we're bringing the Code of Conduct book next month. So if it is something that you all are agreeing on removing it, then I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay. All right. I know, thank you for highlighting it. When we review in advance, it makes it so much easier to review, so thank you for that.
Yeah.
Any questions on the student handbooks? All right, hearing none, I will take a motion to approve both the elementary and middle school, high school student handbooks.
I'll make a motion to approve the middle school and high school student handbooks. I'm sorry, elementary, middle school, and high school student handbooks.
All right, we have a motion by Nate. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
A second by Guy to approve both the elementary and the middle school, high school handbooks. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All those oppose? All right, we will move on to human growth and development.
So that was one of the things that was a part of our ed committee this morning, or I'm sorry, before this meeting this afternoon. I would like to just share and reiterate the, what I had shared with the ed committee regarding our community advisory committee. So I apologize for the redundancy, but it's coming again. It is my opinion that we maintain the integrity of our human growth and development curriculum and follow the community advisory committee's recommendation for no changes to the curriculum. As a principal, I believe our schools have a moral obligation to educate all students comprehensively, and that includes providing them with age-appropriate, medically accurate information of human growth and development. Our current curriculum has been in place for several years without significant alterations, and it continues to serve our students well. It is built on established educational best practices and addresses essential health and safety topics. It is crucial and extremely important to remember that parents always have the ability to opt their children out of any human growth and development lessons. This opt-out provision ensures that families can make choices aligned with their personal beliefs while still allowing the school to fulfill its responsibility to the broader student body. But it is also important to note that up through this year, we have not had, to the best of my knowledge, any parents opting out of lessons in high school, and again, we have not made any significant changes or alterations to what is being taught or what has been taught. Based upon the recommendations of the advisory committee, to remove or significantly alter this curriculum would be a disservice to our students and our educational community. It would deny students essential knowledge, potentially putting their health and safety at risk. I suggest that we accept the community advisory committee's recommendations and affirm our commitment to providing a comprehensive and responsible education for every student in our district, as is currently stated in our school district commission. So that is the first thing that I would, I'm asking of approval, and then I don't know if we want to do them together. The other is, we would like to have our health classes, so our healthy living courses, be in fifth grade, seventh grade, and ninth grade. Currently, they are in, the health classes are in fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, and ninth grade. In the future, we would like to explore the possibility of offering an elective of some sort for students as they get older, but we're not in a position to do anything like that at this point.
Okay. And I guess I'll just kind of talk on behalf of the education committee. So we had this presented to the board last month, two months ago, kind of the process in general.
A while.
Sorry. And then, you know, had a chance to, to ask our questions today. I do appreciate kind of the committee's approach, right? So when you look at the individuals representing the committee, I think it did a good job of kind of a diversified group of people from across the community. I also do think that there was a lot more of, you know, a lot of support, right? And just a couple pieces of dissension, and when we did have the dissension, it was, you know, to the tune of, you know, three of 18. So I do think the process did a good job of representing the needs of the school, the community. The other thing that I would say is, we did kind of highlight and reinforce the importance of over-communication with respect to just transparency of the course, as well as the ability to opt out. So making sure that we just kind of add a little bit more, and again, over-communicate to make sure that parents are informed of the content and of their ability to opt out of individual pieces. So I, I'll just kind of say that on behalf of, I guess, both myself and a bit of the education committee, but I will just open the floor for any questions or further discussion.
I, myself, I wasn't on the committee, so I don't know what was all discussed, but I appreciate the 18 people that did do it, because I'm sure there was some, maybe heated moments a little bit, you know, that comes with the territory when you're on a committee like that. But I do believe, I heard maybe one guy say they weren't given that opportunity to opt out.
I think there was some confusion about opting out of a whole class, like the healthy living class versus the human growth and development lesson. So we don't have the ability to opt out of an entire health class, because there's other stuff that's covered that's not human growth and development, but every parent has the ability to opt out of those lessons that are the human growth and development.
And how do they get communicated that this topic is going to be taught?
So right now, they give, the teachers send out a letter to the parents and let them know, like, we're going to be covering this, you have the ability to opt out. One of the changes that we're going to make to ensure that we are over-communicating is providing as close as we can, a week by week or day by day, like on, during this week, we are going to be doing X, Y, and Z. You know, you have the ability to opt your child out if, if you want. So we're working through that piece of it and what logistically that will look like. And I think one of the things, too, that they talked about was not just having, like, it's in your syllabus, but it's in your syllabus, getting parent signatures, yes, I've seen the syllabus, and then also sending out the parental opt-out information as well, just so there's more communication.
And there's no, what you would say, they can't be punished grade-wise for anything like that, can they?
No.
Any other further questions or discussion?
And, and I've had, obviously, two students down here. One's going to be a senior, one's graduated. There isn't anything that is new.
No, nothing.
There's nothing that's new?
No.
Sorry, I didn't pay much attention to that.
Yes. All right, any further questions? All right, with that, I will take a motion to accept administration's recommendation to make no material changes to the curriculum and to remove healthy, remove healthy living from sixth grade, having it only in fifth, seventh, and ninth grade. Do I have the motion?
I'll put a motion for Jeff to accept the administration's human growth and development curriculum, along with the healthy living out of sixth grade and into fifth, seventh, and ninth grade.
All right, we have a motion by Ken. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second by Nate. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All those oppose? Motion carries. All right, we will move on to middle school, high school course addition.
So the first thing I have here for you is, one of the things we are looking to do is provide content area enrichment opportunities for our middle school students. And all of the options that are highlighted in that yellowish color are new options that we would like to be able to provide for our middle school students during that fourth period block, where before they would have band or music, or else a current events class or study hall. So our teachers were really excited about being able to give them opportunities to study other contents besides just the current events and have a study hall. So with your permission, we would like to add this to our, our choice list for our middle school students.
And I'll just add on top, this was presented today at the education committee, in which we were able to review the course descriptions and then kind of talk a little bit about the calendaring. Obviously, next year, moving to the morning study hall, kind of bookended by the evening when, just a little bit of changes, but like the idea of having more opportunities for the kids to take classes. And, you know, I heard the word fun, which I like, is, you know, how do we have fun while we're learning and give kind of teachers the ability to define what that is. The other thing I'll say is, we did survey the students, and so really, what do they want to hear, and then give that to the teachers to say, now, how do I take that feedback and teach in a way that makes it fun? So I appreciate the process.
Do you want to do the other one?
Let's do the other one.
And then we also had, I presented two courses, elective social studies courses for our high school students at the junior and senior level. One is a criminology class, and then the other one is a modern US history class. Currently, in our US history, that's taught in eighth and ninth grade, you generally get to about World War II, sometimes Vietnam, if you're really looking through the curriculum. So we would like to give that an elective to take, again, a choice to be here in the building, working on content, to look at that post-World War II to the present.
Yeah, again, this one was reviewed by a committee. Any questions? You have one more thing, right?
Um, no.
Do you need a motion on your name change, or no?
Um, we do not. No, not for a name change. I'll just, I'll, when we do our revisions, I'll bring the course guide to you with any of those changes. If it's nothing major, it's literally probably just going to be instead of small engines, it'll be, you know, something with A equipment. So there's no major changes to that curriculum at all. I just didn't want you to be like, what the heck happened to that small engines class that we used to take?
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, with that, then I will take a motion to approve both the middle school and the high school course additions, as presented by the chair.
I'll make a motion to accept the middle school, high school class addition.
All right, we have a motion by Guy. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second by Nate. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All those oppose? All right, we will move on to the elementary wing repair.
Brian Anderson, everyone, this is Ralph Rettlesart. I will share anything else after that, once we've dealt with the, we have a report from UFC Insurance, our insurance company, and we shared with those around already.
So we've been talking about elementary for a little bit of time. And what we're asking for, before I get too far into it, is some things we want to repair to ensure that our building continues to function as designed for a long period of time. So nine, 10 months ago, we investigated an air quality concern that was brought just by the chair. And long and short, they did air quality testing in the room, they tested our HVAC systems, not only in that room, but throughout the entire building for comparison, and there's no deficiencies found in how we operate in terms of air exchange, bringing quality air in, along with filter air, and we're way above what we have to do in terms of getting carbon dioxide and all those things both of the room and keeping fresh air for students and teachers to breathe. However, when they did some testing, first thing is, the wall bit we see on the walls in here, they're not very excited about that on exterior walls because it traps. It can trap moisture within the wall cavity. And so we started doing some investigation. The primary concern at that time was the fact that when we drove with a moisture meter into the drywall, there was far excessive amount of moisture in the drywall. So the decision was made to remove the drywall, see what we had, went out behind the wall and that happened. And what we're dealing with is 30, 40% moisture rating in that wall, that's concealed within that wall cavity. That has the potential to grow mold. We did find some mold in there, but it wasn't elevated among, all the reports are in, I don't have specific numbers in front of me, but I can speak to them if you have a chart if you want to add a question to the board. But the big concern we have is, we're getting moisture into the wall cavity and we can't dry out. And so we brought in a consulting firm, we worked with, Fendorf, because we're working with them, on the upper side of the building. And what we found is, the best way is to seal a transition between steel and brick, install flashing over that seal on the exterior of the building. But then, what's already underway, and what we talked about until we moved over in March, install, instead of fiberglass insulation, install three inches of closed cell foam. The closed cell foam was installed three weeks ago, and already that room was 10 times more manageable in terms of temperature and humidity already. So you can see the effects of it already, and then we're going to replace the drywall. We had nine remaining classrooms along that same construction that has an exterior wall. I believe would be a good thing to go in, remove the drywall, remove the wall paper, install that closed cell foam. We're going to go ahead regardless of what happens and seal that transition. I put flashing all the way around that already to summer, but to go ahead and repair that. In addition to replacing that, removing that drywall for good. The wall paper for good, so we don't have that barrier on top of everything else. There's a couple of things that have to happen. First is we have to remove what's there. Regardless of what we speculate could be, or is, or isn't, behind that wall paper, behind that drywall, we're going to bring somebody in that can take that drywall out, take that fiberglass insulation out, and not have it introduced into our HVAC system or into any of our building systems to cause further problems. So we're going to seal it off. We're going to bring people in that are trained to do it, and we're going to filter that air and make sure that it reaches the outside safely. That honestly is the most expensive part of the talks. We don't have exact goods yet, but I think $75,000 of pie cap for taking those nine classrooms apart. The other piece of it is go ahead and, one of the reasons why the remediation won't cost as much as it did in a single classroom is we're not bringing a company in for one classroom. We're bringing them in for nine at once, so we can save by quantity. Same goes for the closed cell foam as well as, well, I'm doing the sealing for the flashing, so you should think about that. The other thing I'd like to point out too is we're not hiring anybody to do all this. I'm taking, finding people to do it, we have no contract, we know we're seeing that, so we're trying to save some money that way too. But I do believe that the known moisture that we have inside of those wall cavities is something that has, really should be addressed before it becomes a bigger problem. So, questions?
Thanks, my first question for Dan is, is from a funding perspective, we can use capital funding, specifically the interest on
Remodeling.
For this remodel piece, this won't come out of Fund 10?
Correct.
Okay.
In the capital, part of that's remodeling.
Okay. Okay.
And insurance companies make the recommendation to do this, and we're only talking about the exterior rooms. That's the only place the thing of any concern is the exterior rooms, those that Brian's talking about. The one option that insurance company did give us was just to simply remove the wallpaper and then do some further testing and things. But it's going to cost serious money to remediate the glue and stuff like that on the, because it's just that. To make it look nice, the amount of skin coating and things we'd have to do versus putting new drywall up is going to send you drywall bit by bit out. Plus, with the drywall removed, we can reach energy savings. Like I said, what I follow already with HVAC and controllability and the room that we've already completed, doesn't have drywall in it yet, it's unreal. I can't believe we're not going to end up having some energy savings later, long term. They did test our air quality again. They tested rooms, all three air handlers, make sure all three are stills. We retested again, and all of the HVAC systems, they feel is working well. Two of the three rooms they checked, they found no mold spores at all this spring. One, another corner room, like acid corner, I don't know if we had a problem with. They were elevated. One non-toxic mold, I think that's what they called the name of it was, but it's elevated not to the level where it's not the occupancy, but it's elevated. And he had ideas from Mr. Anderson, just now, how to clean, get rid of some of that, to keep monitoring that, and of course, we would do some more monitoring of air quality once this is all done, to verify that it's effective.
Any questions for Mr. Anderson?
So I guess, yeah, I'll just kind of say, struggle with a little bit this one, with this one, just because the tests are negative. But I think if administration's recommendation is to kind of take the time, do it right, remediate, and having the funding available to do it, not hit Fund 10, that helps.
And our property liability insurance company feels the same. Their recommendation says you should get out the wallpaper, you should do this.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will take a motion to approve Phase 2 of the elementary wing repair.
I'll put a motion forward, Jeff, to accept Phase 2 of the elementary wing repair.
A motion by Ken, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Guy. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. All right, we'll move on to the 25, 26, school nutrition online contract.
We need a contract with the PPI for school nutrition, and we have to have this to get the reimbursements that they give us for free and reduced meals, and they get a little bit for full-priced meals, but then also the subsidies we get for the health program and breakfast.
Okay. Any questions on this guy? All right, I'll take a motion to approve the school nutrition online contract.
I make a motion to approve the 2025, 2026 school nutrition online contract.
A motion by Nate, do I have a second?
I'll second it, Jeff.
Seconded by Ken. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. All right, we'll move on to early graduation requests.
So we have a student who would like to graduate at the end of her junior year, already looking at colleges and applications and all of those things. She is on track, and to get on track, she is taking one of her English classes this summer during summer school. I wish her, I think she'll do a great job. Miss having her around the building, I'm sure you'll miss her in the van, but I would recommend to allow her to graduate early.
Any discussion?
The GPA, love the hustle, so.
Mm-hmm, she's got it.
Class rank, everything. Phenomenal.
I will hear a motion to accept this early graduation request for Elizabeth Brozak.
I'll make a motion to approve the early graduation of Melissa Brozak.
Elizabeth.
Elizabeth Brozak, I'm sorry. Thank you.
We have a motion by Nate.
I stumble, I'm on the car. Of course, thank you.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second by Guy.
Yeah, that's exactly it.
All those in favor, vote aye. All those opposed. All right, we will move on to the revolving line of credit with F and M.
Every year at the end, meaning the community gives us authority to borrow money as needed to operate and revitalize, but at this time, the last year since I've been here, I haven't had bank $500,000 is what the revolving line of credit would be. The last two years, the first time we've had to use it since I've been back here. But because our fund balance has gone down, hopefully, if you put money back into my balance, we may not have to use this as much. We only had $900 in interest this past year, which is not huge amount, but zero would be better, but at least you have the money as necessary and Colleen and Andrew monitor this closely. And we also try to maximize our revenues and grant claiming and stuff, so we need this as little as possible. So if we get it down to pretty much with science and only borrow, actually have to, and use it for like four days, and when the date payment's coming, or tax payments are coming, we'll pay it back as quick as possible. There's a lot of signatures required on this, you see that happen there.
Yeah, don't leave it outside of the guy. Yeah. And I do appreciate, I think it's the community support of the referendum that that made that possible, of kind of getting us to a place where we can say, maybe it'll be less than 900 in interest. I appreciate that.
All right, I'll be taking a motion to approve the revolving line of credit with Farmers and Merchants Bank.
I'll put a motion forward, Jeff, to accept revolving line of credit with Farmers and Merchants Bank.
A motion by Ken, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Guy. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. All right, we move on, do we have a budget?
Well, I wanted to, but just time cut it right short, and I'm looking at what the state's doing. There wasn't a way until we actually get the numbers from the state what they're planning on. It's different than we expected, it's a little bit less than I expected. I thought they were going to do something with the low revenue ceiling, is what they did last time. They seemed to not want to touch that this time. And they, sadly, they're going to give a little extra in special ed, but very small amounts, increasing the reimbursement for special ed costs, maybe just a few percentage, worth maybe $10,000, $15,000 is all that would mean to us. They're also looking at high cost, again, maybe another $10,000, $12,000 the first year, or maybe that again the second year. So they're not making any big investments in public education or new investments. They've been hung up on the $325 increase on revenue limits that was signed into law last time. They started to say, that's enough, that's what you're getting, and they're targeting a little bit extra, but nothing big.
And I know that, I believe that was challenged, right? Has that been successfully challenged, or right now?
The challenge failed, it's going to remain law, based on sort of court decision. So thankfully, we at least got that.
Yep.
If we'd gotten that the last few years, or during COVID, and we got nothing for a couple of years, we might have been okay, if we had kept getting that, but.
And correct me, but you're, I mean, the models that we've seen have all been based on that 325.
Yes.
So we haven't modeled anything in.
No, that was the model, what is the term law? When law changes, we try to get the model.
Okay. All right, well, nothing to do here, but we'll probably have that one next July.
Yeah, that would be the plan. Not a bunch more information how we're going to end this school year at the same time, option 2.
All right, and we'll move on to a second reading of the old policy 34.1.
Yeah, we had first reading last month, so now we're asked for a second reading so that it become official.
Again, always thank the Policy Committee for what they do, but I will take a motion to approve the second reading of the policy policies update 34.1.
I'll make a motion to approve the new policies update 34.1.
A motion by Guy, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Nate. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. All right, we will move on to district reports.
District 1.
Go ahead.
Do we want to move the call session to the public session?
No, I think, once we get the administrator reports, we can ask that question.
Okay.
Okay. So we will take the principal report, so we'll start with you, Brian.
All right, sir. Just want to thank all the staff for summer school, summer school's going well. The kids have learned transition to their different classrooms. You know, you get four-year-olds that are in the building who never really, and you're officially a student. So sometimes we get our kids struggling, just in general, just trying to navigate your way around the building. So I appreciate the staff and all their help, including the front office, classroom teachers, and kids. With the parking lot, there's some pieces that we're maneuvering just to make sure it's going smooth. We're going to essentially have construction on the building, so we feel like we have a good plan, and parents will just need to kind of utilize the park parking lot, some of the side streets, and those things, or the drop zone and the blue lane as they roll in. But it's going to be pretty smooth overall. I'm working on professional development right now, Dr. Trefton and I have been working on that quite a bit throughout the spring, so we can hit the ground running next fall. Got some of those resources out earlier this week, actually yesterday. But I do think we have a pretty good plan for a quick turnaround of August 21st, of kind of what that's going to look like here coming into fall. And then finally, I want to thank the staff, elementary staff, for a really strong final push at the end of the school year. A lot of paperwork, a lot of required paperwork that goes on at the end of the year that is time-consuming, but they did a good job getting that completed while also supporting our students. I'm always reminded at the end of the year that many of our students are excited for summer, but some, you know, it's tough, it's a tough transition for them, they're going to miss the the safety, security, friendships, friendships with teachers that need to form over the school year. So there's kind of a loss for kids. So I have to witness that here, on the last day of school, as kids walk out of the building. And finally, the last day was really cool, the kids really enjoyed it. We had inflatables, we had our field day, teachers did a great job organizing all that, and that all set up. So I do feel like we had a really strong end to the year with that setup.
With, with school ending early next year, will summer school start when it typically does? Or will it, I mean, because you're going to have like a couple-week lag?
Do you think it starts a longer middle? I'd have to look into that.
Okay, I know that it's definitely.
I'm going to school upstairs.
Yeah, I'm going to pull up the calendar right now.
Got that.
Yeah, I'll find it later talking to him.
I'm seeing it, I'm sorry.
I'm going to still look it up.
Yeah.
Do you want me to start?
Summer school begins June 8th. And last day of school is 21st, so there's two-week break.
So you do have a.
Extra, okay.
Yeah.
So I had the honor of being asked to go to the end-of-year FFA CTE banquet that the students hosted with Mr. Seiter and Mr. Christian. At the banquet, they honored students, teachers, business partners, business partners, and then also the CTE supporters group. And so I want to just give another shout out to the CTE supporters group that has been working, I mean, a group of parents and people in the community have been working tireless hours to secure funding for our programming. Last I checked, they had raised over $80,000, not only with just grants, but also the trivia night and all of the other things that they're doing. So I just really wanted to give another shout out to them because we, one of the things that I have been working on professionally is continuing to bridge that gap between us and the community to make it smaller and smaller and smaller, because we all exist together. And so that group has been, has been amazing. We had another successful graduation, it was a gorgeous day, not too hot, just a little bit breezy, but it was just enough to keep the bugs away, keep us cool. So again, it was, graduation was, was awesome. Like Brian said, we've been working on finalizing and getting ready for the start of the year, not only for the teachers, but also I've been working with Mrs. Leibniz Ball on finalizing schedules for students for next year. And so getting all of this done will help us be able to get those by, hopefully, within the next week or two. I also, the last week of school, I had four different family tours that week, so that is always fun. I love to showcase our building, I love to showcase our students. One of them, we had a student who was getting ready to set up for the FFA banquet, and she just stopped us in the hall and was just telling this family how amazing her experience has been. She's openly rolled in from Ryo and just, I mean, I, the mom was joking, she said, how much did you have to pay her to do that? I asked her if she wanted to come with me on my next one I had on Friday, and she, you know, turned me down, and she was definitely a little bit, but. So that was super exciting. We've also been spending some time playing on our Dash and Discover Fall River community event. It is on August 23rd, so if you can get that, if you haven't seen any of the save the dates, please go ahead and save that date for us. I know it's kind of the last two rounds of summer, so we'll see who's around and who's not, but we have a lot of exciting things. We've got a 5K run, I've learned tonight it's not a race because we're not like giving away prizes for first place, I don't know. By the way, we have a kids, a kids' fun run. And then we also have our high school students, middle and high school students doing some fun things with our littles coming out. We have the businesses, several businesses already committed to setting up tables and showcasing what they have. We've got yoga coming in, the fire trucks, and so it should be a really fun day. We originally had it planned for 8 to noon, we're looking at maybe pushing it back to 1 o'clock, just to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to do all of the things that they want to do. So we've got a few more meetings to finalize, all of those details, and I'm extremely excited about that event on August 23rd.
Sorry, who's putting that on?
So it's a joint effort with the foundation, the chamber, the school. Those are the three major players.
So I've always thought, since I think Hannah's hope stopped, right, we need to run again, so that's awesome.
Yep, yeah, we're super excited. We actually met at 4 o'clock this afternoon to get a lot, to get that, more details of that.
Thank you.
Any questions for either principal? All right, we'll move on to. All right, we'll move on to superintendent or district.
Mostly, as I've been working on, I mean, talking about a lot of these different action I've studied, but the report I have here, the last thing I mentioned there is, we have the National Federation State High School Association summer meeting again this year, this year since Chicago, since it's a lot closer than it has been lately. And so it's a good chance to be going out in other states at the latest and learning how we can give our students the best experiences possible. And the top thing, I'll just read this, it said, as I am my 50th year here in Fall River, but one more to go. I've been reflecting on the progress that we have made together in staff, in school culture, academics, and taking care of our properties. And now we're looking to the future of our district, securing it for years to come, providing facilities that are communicate proud of, while giving our students unmatched opportunities. That's my hope for the future of this district, and kind of reflecting where you've been and where we're going.
Thank you, and I appreciate everything that you've done, and we'll continue to do it for the next year. All right, so just moving on to the next topic, we did build into the agenda, the ability to go into closed session, so there is the discussion of the possible action on hiring of an assistant principal and principal. So we wanted to give board members the chance, if there are any specifics, to talk about candidates. We can do that in closed session, but having that each of us has participated in the interview process and the two different kind of legs of it, we certainly don't need to go into closed session, we can just move right into the open session forum. And so I guess I'll give, anybody that wants to make a motion to go into closed session, we can do so at this time. Hearing none, we will stay in open session and talk about the discussion of possible action on hiring of assistant principal and principal.
We didn't really talk about this. So we would like to extend the opportunity to have Maria Kussler join our Fall River family again. We went through, we started with the 27 applicants for our position. We finished, gets a few come in late, we ended up with 29. I pulled out of those, I can't remember if it was 13 or 15, do you remember? I think it was 13 also, applicants from those, from the whole pool, and I gave them to Mr. Barrier and then Mrs. Hayden, our instructional coach, and asked them to pick our top five. From our top five, we came up with seven candidates total. I called the seven candidates, one of them called me back after setting up an interview and said, you know, after talking to my wife, I just, I've got some young kids and I'm not ready to make that leap, but thank you for the offer. And then another one who had also taken, taken an interview or sent up an interview, had emailed me in over the weekend prior and had stepped out. So we ended up interviewing five total candidates. Within round one, we went through a long, long afternoon into the evening, and then we landed on two final candidates that we brought back. And out of those two candidates that we brought back as finalists, we felt that she was going to fit in with our district and our transition plan as we had envisioned it the most.
And the other thing I'll say is, just kind of being part of that interview committee, so Ken and I were two board members, but we had teachers, we had students, and we had parents involved, and it was just really cool that for me to see the involvement of the teachers and just kind of their support for Ms. Kussler as a candidate, and just kind of how they thought it would be a, you know, positive towards the transition and the succession. And so that's the thing that stood out most for me in the process.
Any questions or comments?
Guy and I were on the second round of interviews, so Jeff and Ken seen the first round with all the applicants, we've seen the final two applicants, and I guess I would kind of echo the same thing that Jeff said as far as the support from teachers, staff, I mean, it's a, it's a positive thing, and it's a, it's a one-year position, so, I mean, I think it makes sense.
Okay. And then just to clarify, the one year is the assistant principal, and then the second year would be principal, so as Dennis retires, Dr. Treptow goes up to district administrator, and then she would fill in as principal.
So any questions? Otherwise, I will take a motion to approve the hiring of our recommended assistant principal and principal.
I'll put a motion forward to hire the Maria Kussler as our assistant principal slash principal in the following year.
All right, I have a motion by Ken, do I have a second?
I will second that.
Seconded by Nate, all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Nate, do I have a second?
I have a second, Jeff.
Seconded by Ken, all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? 9:36.